Welcome back and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. I need a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda, however, I think Mr. Rutter might want to make a comment about that before we move ahead.
Yes, thank you, Warden. We have an addition to the agenda where we will be, it's in addition to our closed session agenda, where we will be discussing the short term rental bylaw and the, we would be receiving advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. Our solicitor will actually be attending the meeting virtually. And yeah, so we, I'm asking that that item be added to the agenda.
Okay, and the solicitor will be here at 11:00, so we'll have to judge ourselves accordingly. So could I have a mover and a seconder then to adopt the agenda as amended? Councilors Carter and McKechnie?
Moved by councillor Carter, seconded by councillor McKechnie, be it resolved that the May 10th, 2023 Halliburton County Committee of the Whole Agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof?
I could, I'd like to advise that councillor Dayu has, has advised me that she has a pecuniary interest on the short term rental item on the closed session agenda.
Okay, thank you. First, next on the agenda is a delegation by Susan Hay with respect to fireworks, would I? Is Miss Hay going to?
Virtual.
Good morning. Can you hear me? There we go.
There you are.
Morning. Shall I begin?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good morning, Warden Danielson and councillors. The present, the purpose of my presentation is to to advise you of the unintended consequences of fireworks. So not only are they a nuisance to people, people who love peace and quiet, but they are also a health hazard for humans, wildlife and for the environment. And I would like you to be aware that the sources for the information on the slides and in my notes are listed at the bottom of each of the notes, which you need to go to in, in order to see these on the PowerPoint presentation. Next slide, please. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Susan Hay and I'm a retired registered nurse. My husband Keith and I have been living in Dicart at all for almost a decade. I am speaking to you today on behalf of Environment Halliburton, and I do appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. Next slide, please. At our annual Cottage Association General Meeting, fireworks is the topic that is on the agenda every single year, mainly because many folks find them so annoying. They are toxic. They put aquatic health at risk. They cause extreme stress in birds, wildlife and pets, reduce the quality of life for people who value peace and quiet, and they add to greenhouse gas emissions and particulate air pollution. Next slide, please. Fireworks emit absurdly high amounts of harmful toxins, including lead and copper, said Dr. Terry Gordon, the senior author of a study conducted over 14 years leading up to 2020. These metals, which are used to give fireworks their vibrant color, also damage human and animal health. Traditional fireworks are wrapped tightly with metals like copper and lithium, which create the blue and red colors that we see in the sky. But when they explode, metallic compounds released into the environment can be carcinogenic or toxic to both humans and animals. Dr. Gordon estimated that some 90% or more of fireworks that we use in North America are being imported from China where guidelines for their ingredients are not followed. perchlorate is an inorganic anion that is used in solid rocket propellants, fireworks and munitions. The use of fireworks is identified as one of the main contributors in the increasing environmental perchlorate contamination, which is emerging as a potent thyroid disruptor. Fireworks can worsen existing diseases and cause others. Therefore, fireworks represent a danger to both people and animals who live in areas where they explode or in relatively distant locations when, where the wind transports the particles. There is also a risk, risk of ingestion of the residue of fireworks and firecrackers. The proximity of humans to the areas where the firecrackers are set off can cause burns and damage to the eyes and with reduced emergency services. This is of particular concern. Next slide, please. A friend of mine told me that I should not leave my lakeside residence to escape the noise of fireworks because a neighbor of his had his roof catch on fire during a fireworks display. Next slide, please. Fireworks put our lake health at risk. Studies have shown that the toxic chemicals from fireworks bioaccumulate in fish. Loons, the most iconic and well-loved bird in cottage countries, suffer from both the noise of the fireworks and the toxins in the fish that they eat. These substances will be present to some degree in fish that are eaten by people as well. Next slide, please. In a recent Cottage Life magazine, Ken Wright, a biologist and loon researcher from British Columbia, said that human-induced environmental changes are usually at the root of their decline. A pair of loons and their young eat up to half a ton of fish in a single season. So if fish have toxins bioaccumulated in their, in their flesh, you can predict that loons' health might be adversely affected. Next slide, please. Fireworks explosions can produce a blind panic in wildlife and birds, including loons and our pets, that lead to serious injury, deep-rooted debilitating fears or even death. The annual timing of some large-scale fireworks events such as Victoria Day weekend coincides with migratory reproductive behavior of wildlife and thus may have adverse long-term population effects on them. A study found that some birds traveled 500 kilometers further to escape the noise and pollution, thus depleting energy supplies needed to survive. Next slide, please. The hearing of many animals is much more sensitive than it is in humans, so the explosions of fireworks are not only more disturbing to them, but they can damage their hearing more severely. Some fireworks generate a higher noise level than gunshots. Next slide, please. It is estimated that one-fifth of disappearances of companion animals are due to very loud sounds, mainly fireworks and storms. It has been pointed out that the reaction of dogs to the sound of fireworks is similar to post-traumatic stress in human animals. However, this effect could be much more harmful in dogs because they don't have the ability to rationalize their anxiety. I point this out because wildlife most likely experienced similar trauma, but we can't observe the, the effects readily. Next slide, please. Fireworks in the United States emit over 60,000 metric tons of CO2 every year. To put that in perspective, that's a bit more than what 12,000 gas-powered cars emit in a year. Furthermore, fireworks emit a significant amount of ozone, which is a, also a greenhouse gas, as well as particulate air pollution, according to a study published in the journal Nature. Next slide, please. Many cities across the States, Europe and Canada have swapped out traditional fireworks for laser or drone light shows. Over the past decade, Banff Alberta and the Calgary Zoo have switched to low-noise fireworks. The city of Brampton, Ontario, has banned the sale and use of fireworks altogether. Silent fireworks actually display the most stunning colors, more so than big loud explosions. These more, more colorful fireworks are significantly quieter but may still contain toxic substances. Environmentally-friendly fireworks reduce emissions, but the effects on air quality were not quantified. The conclusion of the study was that they weren't that much more environmentally friendly. Laser and drone light shows are unfortunately very expensive. Next slide, please. In summary, fireworks are poisonous. They create air pollution. The byproducts can be ingested by fish, birds and wildlife. The noise that they produce cause stress to humans, pets, wildlife and birds. They add to greenhouse gas emissions and they decrease the quality of life for home and cottage owners who enjoy peace and quiet. Next slide, please. Although sometimes it doesn't seem like it in our county, we are in the midst of a climate crisis and a biodiversity crisis. We need creative thinking to reduce the impact that we have on our environment, its non-human inhabitants and the physical and mental health of our residents and cottagers. As we evolve as a society, as we continue to have a greater and greater value for our natural inhabitants and neighbors, we should be exploring all options, said Maggie Sullivan, author of an article entitled "How Fireworks Can Affect Your Health and the Ecosystem." I believe that it's time to make choices that don't harm our environment. I ask you to consider three options. The first, and my preference, would be to ban them and their sale in the county altogether. However, I realize that at this late date, that may not be possible, but maybe it could be considered for next year. A second option would be to allow fire, silent fireworks only. And the third option is to at least ask people not to set off fireworks in May when birds and animals are at their most vulnerable. And what I would like you to consider in the short term is to put a notice in the local papers, on the local radio stations, in addition to your social media channels, asking that people consider other options besides fireworks to celebrate that are not harmful to birds, animals and fish and human beings. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks so much, Susan, for your presentation and for the work that you've done in, in preparation of it. It's, it's good, solid information. I, I do understand that, I think all four municipalities have at least restricted the times of their firework displays. But you know, your suggestion that we look at alternates is a good one, given that there are a number of alternates that could be considered. I, I'm wondering too if, if individual municipalities might consider rather than, than having, you know, fireworks going off throughout the entire county, maybe that we, we concentrate on public displays in, in public parks and places where, you know, the firework residue wouldn't necessarily be going into the lakes. But I know for sure that we can get the message out through social media about the dangers and concerns that you've got. I think probably all of us could do that, but I, I can't speak for the rest of council, so I'd ask if there are any questions or comments about the presentation. Councillor Carter?
No, this is really a question.
I can't hear you, but I'm here.
This is really a question for Mr. Rutter. Could we even ban the sale in the, in county?
I, I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I haven't investigated that to be honest. I, I know that some jurisdictions, I think, I think Ms. Hay referred to Brampton, where they have done it, so I would assume that there is some ability to legislate that way, but again, I haven't done any investigation.
And then I guess my, my question, we, we received your report as part of our package, so I don't, we don't have all of the, the references, so would you mind sending us your report?
I sure can. I, my understanding, it was to be attached to the agenda, but I can certainly do that.
Well, I, I think the way it's, it goes into the PDF, it didn't necessarily include all that, so if you could just send your original PowerPoint or something, that would be helpful.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Well, and one challenge with the total ban is enforcement of that. I mean, already have enforcement issues with our restrictions on fireworks. So, you know, I, I think at this point in time, probably the best thing that we could do if, if each municipality is, is willing is to get the message out on social media. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Carter?
So what we, we did in Minden is, you know, I, I live on a lake. I live very high up and I can watch on Saturday evenings fireworks going off in all directions and, but I have no idea where they're originating. I mean, I see them when they explode in the air, but finding where they originate is very difficult. So we found that the idea of trying to, you know, make it so that the, you know, bylaw officer would be sitting in a boat in the middle of the lake trying to determine and catch somebody in the act is virtually impossible because they can't be on all lakes and they're not going to be there 24 hours a day. So we in Minden tried to put in a permitting system that says that in order to have fireworks, you need to have a permit. And, and then if, if fireworks go off without a permit, the, and the volunteer fire department rolls, then you are charged an administrative fee. The cost of, you know, rolling, rolling out the, the trucks. It's, it's, it's somewhat helpful, but again, the magnitude of this issue, you know, just in Minden Hills, the number of fireworks that are going off on any Saturday night is, is, is very difficult to try to control.
Any other comments or questions? Could I, go ahead, Susan?
I, I just wanted to make a comment that it might be easier to enforce if there was a total ban. The odd, the odd fireworks going off would be much more noticeable.
Well, that's something that each one of the, of our members can take back to their, their prospective councils to have a discussion about. But as you say, sadly, that can't be done this year, so we'll hopefully see that there's some action for next year. Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the delegation? Councillors Dayu and Carter?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the Whole receives for information the delegation from Susan Hay on behalf of Environment Halliburton.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks so much for your presentation and your passion.
Thank you.
Could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of April the 12th? Councillor Shell and Ferry?
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Ferry, be it resolved that the minutes from the April 12th, 2023 meeting of Halliburton County Council Committee of the Whole be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. No correspondence to review, so next up is Rhodes. Morning, Robert?
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, Committee of the Whole. First up, we have our monthly status report. I note under the capital projects, we've added a couple new projects. One, some good news for the county. We did receive approval for a $100,000 grant to do AODA improvements to the administration building here. So we'll be moving through that process and bringing report or reports through the Joint Accessibility Committee and, and the council as, as we move forward. With one of the main goals is improving the stairs and the ramp out front, as well as other improvements throughout the facility to make it just more AODA compliant.
That is good news.
And as everyone knows, maintenance is ongoing, so we're sweeping roads and once that gets done, we'll, our staff will start moving into installing culverts to get ready for our road rehab program. It's kind of the main highlights of our status report for this month.
Any question on the status report? Hearing none? Could I have a mover and a seconder then to receive it? Councillors Burton and Carter?
Before I read the resolution, Warden, would it be worthwhile to have a conversation about the Goodrum Bridge rehab and the change in plans, just while we're? Is that something?
Good idea.
Sure, as I informed council last night, yesterday, our consulting engineer advised that they don't, that they do not recommend for us to go through with the jacking of the bridge next week. We're going to delay that till later in the summer to make sure that once it's jacked up, it can actually be brought back down. As happens with house renovations and bridge renovations, once you open up the walls or open up the, the, the structure, you find things that you didn't expect and we just want to make sure that it's a one-day closure. If we couldn't bring it down, it could turn into a multi-day closure, be very expensive and very disruptive for the neighborhood.
Any questions on that?
Moved by councillor Burton, seconded by councillor Carter, be it resolved that the May 2023 status report on capital projects, operations and road maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Committee of the Whole.
All in favor? That's carried. And next up is your rail trail status report.
Yes, thank you. As per your request, put together a brief status report on the rail trail, just noting some of the things that were done in the past couple of years, as well as some of our key items that are in the budget this year, including benches and signing, et cetera. Also, I think one of the big things that maybe the warden wanted to talk about was just the Alberton County Rail Trail Roundtable, if that needs to be reinstituted. So I'm open for any questions that council may have.
Questions, comments, councillor Carter?
Just talk a little bit more about that round table. What, what is it? Was it?
Certainly, I tried to provide council with a bit of a package on the history. The, the committee was started in 2020 with its main goal to review the 2004 master plan and turn it more into a management plan, so update it to current kind of standards and, and address items of the day. The committee had about three meetings prior to my arrival. There's been a lot of changeover with staff and I attended one and at the time, we've, I think throughout the process, we've lost the director of Public Works, we've lost the director of Tourism, which now we've replaced, and we've also lost a couple of members or have changed over with the new council. We had Mayor Roberts as well as Chair Moffett. So hopefully that's just a little bit of history on the, the process, but it was just really to rewrite the master plan into a, a more of a management plan to deal with risk management and wording of the day.
And, and just a tiny bit more history on that. The, the rail trail used to live with the Roads Committee and it was decided by council that that should be, it should be something that was handled by council as a whole. And, and they did strike the, the round table or working group to look at the master plan. There was quite a bit of work done, but you know, it's the sort of thing that is, keeps evolving. So I, I guess I would look to council to see whether you're interested in re-establishing a working group to look at the rail trail and any thoughts and ideas about how we want to move forward. And I know there is some work being done by, by our, as part of our interpretive signage that includes the rail trail. But I think there's quite a bit more to it than that. You see, councillor Dayu, your hand up?
I, I think I would be in favor of that for a number of reasons, including there is a chunk of change that goes towards this project and it would be good to make sure that there, you know, that we're optimizing that. And my, my question to you on that is, do you have off the top of your head, or could you provide at some point, user stats? Do we know how many people are using the trail over the course of the year?
Through the warden, to the councillor. We could see about getting some stats. I know some of the organizations do keep track of some numbers when they're out there, but we don't regularly track the numbers of, of users.
And you, you would need at least three organizations to do that on, on our behalf, but yeah, it's not something that we've had to date. So with respect to a working group or round table, I'd like to hear your thoughts on, on who you see being involved in that. Would that be just a subcommittee of council, or would you see outside organizations having any role in that working group? Councillor Burton?
Probably the last person standing here was on that committee, I believe, on the round table. And to me, it worked very well and I would certainly entertain maybe going back to the round table with, I believe at that time it was the four mayors that were on it, if I, memory serves me. But I would certainly support going back to, to that to bring forward to, any recommendations, whatever you bring forward to, to County Council.
Okay, any other thoughts about membership? Councillor Carter?
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, one of the things about having some, some usage statistics, you know, I know that whenever I'm on that trail, it's, it seems I run into lots of people, some of whom are using it just to travel from point A to B. Because it keeps them off the roads, but I, I, it would be interesting to know how many people that are using it are from outside the county versus inside the county. You know, to me, this is, this is really tourism as opposed to roads department.
Well, that's why it came to council, as opposed to.
And so, I, you know, and I think that if you're going to have a round table, I mean, if it, if it was like the four mayors or, or us here, we're, we're not really discussing it as users. It would seem to me that having the outside groups that are stakeholders and are really using this, plus the tourism group should be certainly involved.
My, my thinking with respect to that was that, that it would be a committee that was formed of members of, maybe say, one representative from each municipality and that we would invite those user groups like the ATV Association, Snowmobile Association, the Friends of the Rail Trail, each to come and, and join us for, you know, to give us input into that. But given the, that they have such divergent interests in some cases, that it might be challenging to include them as all, as a member of, of the working group. There's something to think about. Councillor Al?
I have a tendency to, to appreciate what, what councillor Carter is saying, that you want the input. But I, I would be more in favor of more like a delegation type scenario, which is coming close to what you were talking about, Warden, in that people would bring their, their ideas to that committee and then those ideas could be developed and if the committee and that group decides it's a worthwhile thing, then a, a working task force could be put together for whatever project that might be, for whatever period of time it would take to do it. As opposed to having people coming in from diverse groups, because it's, you're going to have some people that want to use the rail trail for this purpose and there's going to be contrary people who wouldn't want to use it for a different purpose. And I'm concerned that, that that could become an issue if it were as part of a committee. Whereas in a delegation or some kind of an invitational type scenario, you could actually see the merit of whatever it was that that particular group was interested in.
Any further comments? Okay, so what does council think about the idea of the four mayors forming that committee, or would you like to just say, you know, one or the other of our representatives here? Or to appoint someone from within your own, your own council? Councillor Carter? I was, I was going to say I can make a decision, but I don't think you want me to.
Look, I, I think a representative from each, each municipality works as we may deem, you know, we may have a councillor who is, who has more interest in this subject than, 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 you know, that I have. You know, I, I'm a, I'm a strong user and I believe in this and particularly from, from the aspect of tourism and so on. I've been on trails across North America whenever we go on vacation, so I, I really believe in this, but you know, I, I may not be the best representative of Minden and that, so I would prefer that we each decide who moves on.
So can we have this brought back to each of the individual councils to determine who they would like to to see? Represent them? And I mean, for my purposes, I, I would just like to ensure that, you know, when we're talking about the use of the trail, because that has been one of the largest, I think. It may be one of the very few times that the weighted vote was ever used was about the rail trail. Surprisingly enough, and when you think of all the issues that we have, but I'd just like to make sure that we. I'd just like to make sure that we, we protect the use of all of our users, that we, you know, we don't gradually squeeze out one group over another. Okay, so can we have a resolution to that effect?
So I've drafted one, um, be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three rail trail status report. That staff be directed to renew the round table to include one elected representative from each local municipality.
And could I have a mover in a second or to that effect? Counselors, do you and Carter? No, all in favor? That's carried. Could I also have a mover in a second or to receive the rail trail status report?
That was actually part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Takes care of that. Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Nothing under EMS, so we move into finance. Good morning.
Good morning, Warden and Council.
So you have your check registered?
Yes, my first reporters are April check register, which totaled, uh, two million seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and twelve cents.
Any questions on the check register? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Counselors Carter and McKecney.
Moved by counselor Carter, second by counselor McKecney be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on check register for April two thousand twenty-three. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the check register for April two thousand twenty-three with checks, EFTs and PAPs totaling two million seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and twelve cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And next is the payroll register.
We had two pay periods in April with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and thirteen thousand, twelve dollars and forty-one cents.
Any questions on the payroll register? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive that? Counselors Fury and Carter.
Moved by counselor Fury, second by counselor Carter be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on the payroll register for April two thousand twenty-three. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the payroll register for April two thousand twenty-three with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and thirteen thousand, twelve dollars and forty-one cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, your year-to-date actuals.
Uh, so as of the end of April, we should be approximately thirty-three percent spent. Um, overall, as of April thirtieth, twenty-nine point six eight percent of operating expenses have been incurred. And nine point eight nine percent of capital expenses. Do you want to note that I have reached out to a couple of our, uh, directors after reviewing, um, our expenses to date, just to bring it, uh, to their attention, some specific line items that are starting to trend slightly over budget at this time, so just that they can keep an eye on those as we move forward.
Any questions on the year-to-date actuals? You got to keep them in line, Andrea. Could I have a mover in a second or to receive them? Counselors McKecney and Shell.
Moved by counselor McKecney, second by counselor Shell be resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the staff report on the year-to-date actuals as at April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And further that it be recommended to Halliburton County Council that the year-to-date actuals as at April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks so much, Andrea. Next is our IT status report.
Morning. Good morning. So before you today is my standard monthly IT status report. Um, we've got quite a number of projects happening and even more to be added to this list. So we're looking at a fairly busy back half of this year. Um, the one thing I did want to bring to the committee's attention in the event that you noticed it is on page three. The fishing security test results, you may have noticed that the, the most recent test on that, there was uh, much higher than normal, normal failure where we usually get maybe three or four people. There was twenty-three people that failed that test. Um, what I had done as a follow-up is I reached out in a group email, kind of as a standard process. Showed them the test email, kind of highlighted all the flags, um, and then followed up, uh, within a week or two with another test email. And of the twenty-three people that failed the original one, that we had one partial failure on the follow-up one that was actually trickier than, than the first. So, um, that speaks to me that hopefully the, some of the training, some of the feedback we're giving them is actually starting to, uh, work. So, um, other than that, I don't think there's anything that I need to bring to your attention, but always happy to answer questions.
Questions? Counselor Dayu.
I love watching for those test emails. I love those. They're great, you know, I'm, and, and in a way, the entertainment value, if I might use that, um, helps me to train because I'm always looking to see, you know, whether there are little hits and things like that. My question is, um, what is a partial failure? Does it, does it mean you didn't click respond, but you did hover over something too long or what, what does that mean?
So if I may, it was a two-part test where, um, in the email, uh, the partial failure, the, the first failure was clicking on the button, which brings you to another page. The second failure and the more serious failure was, um, that, that button brought you to a fake login where you could put in a username and password. So the person had clicked on the link, got to that page, then obviously kind of stepped back and said, there's an issue here. I'm not going to go any further. So the system we use can track all that. So I can say that's the reason I, I said it was a partial failure and not a not a full failure.
Counselor Carter.
Well, you've I think the training is work, uh, work. I'm so sensitized now that I received something recently from Bell Canada, which I assume to be actual, you know, whatever, some sort of phishing, uh, uh, test, uh, on myself. And so I completely ignored it, deleted it, burnt my, uh, my deleted file box, the whole works, and then promptly had my internet canceled because I hadn't responded.
That's the safest, that's the safest.
So I think it's important that we, um, you know, we, we actually be careful, but we, we, you know, we really do have to read these these things and, and, and use our own judgment to decide whether something is real or not. And, uh, it's, it's getting more and more difficult, uh, with the, uh, with the skills of the people who are actually trying to attack us.
The, our IT department has heightened my suspicions so terribly that I'm hounding my odd hours of the day with like, is this real? Is this safe? So it's working, I think, for the most part. Uh, any other questions or comments? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the IT status report? Counselor Burton and Carter.
Moved by counselor Burton, second by counselor Carter be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole receives for information, the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three IT status report.
All in favor? Thank you, Mr. March for keeping us in line.
Thank you.
Uh, nothing under planning and environment, nothing under personnel. So next up is tourism and the, uh, first quarter economic development and tourism update. Morning, Mr. Rovell.
Good morning. Thank you, uh, for having me this morning, uh, and good morning to members of committee. Um, just, uh, a couple of items. Um, just one of, uh, point emphasis on, and then just a verbal update as well. Um, just did want to thank our partners at Fleming Crew for helping us organize the job fair that took place recently in Halliburton. Um, it, it makes our lives a lot easier when we have partners like that that are able to help Tracy and I put that together and they kind of took the, or they took the logistical lead on that, which helps us deliver tho- those programs more efficiently from a financial standpoint and just a human resources standpoint. Uh, and then one other item that isn't in the report that, um, we were able to finalize yesterday was just a, a partnership with the Home Builders Association. Uh, so they had, they're doing a tour in a couple of weeks, uh, where they're bringing forty students, uh, throughout the county and helping them. Uh, they're going to do a bus tour where they're going to stop at various job sites to kind of introduce some and help them familiarize themselves with construction sites and the various trades that are associated with them. So we're really looking forward to what that brings, uh, and we're hopeful through that partnership, new opportunities will develop both, um, with the high schools, um, and other trades programs. So, um, and with that, happy to field any questions.
Any questions or comments on the report, Counselor Shell?
Thank you. Um, Scott, I had sent you an email that, um, one of our members of council from Minnan Hills had asked some questions. Do you want me to? I, I've emailed this to you. I said I could, I could ask, but it's, it's a fairly lengthy question. So is it something you just want to bring back to council another time or do you want me to address it now? Which would be best for you? Um, knowing that your assistant there is off.
Uh, I was able actually to determine, um, get a response back. So if, if you want me to summarize maybe the question and then I can
Yeah, sure.
provide the response.
That'd be great.
Um, so, uh, Counselor Shell did forward an email just, um, with a question regarding, uh, the statistical information on page two, just tourism receipts from twenty nineteen. Um, and a question really surrounding the seventy-nine percent of visitor spending is related to people that stay overnight. And the question was really is, is the total expenditure is the hotel stay or the cost of ho- hotel stay included in that? Um, and we, we were able to confirm that it was, um, which is again, that, that's not out of a norm, that obviously someone that's going to stay overnight, uh, is going to spend a bit more money, uh, and that information's also based on per person as well. It is twenty nineteen, the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport generally releases this information. I think it's every three years. So we're hopeful that we'll see um, a new updated version of that. Um, some larger municipalities, they can purchase that data from Environics. If, if council wanted us to do that, we could explore that. Um, and it'll be moving forward, we will get that data, but it's based on the regional tourism organizations boundaries. So it'll be a little bit trickier. Um, as we won't be comparing apples to apples in the future, so we'll just have to dig a bit deeper, um, and be able to pull information from that. Um, and if there's any information in this report, this is still a relatively new format for Tracy and I. So if there's, there's too much in there, just let us know or there's something more specific you want us to include, uh, moving forward, uh, just let us know and we'll be happy to accommodate those requests.
I think it's a, it's a full sum report. There's lots of information there and, uh, you know, unless, uh, anyone says otherwise, I think that format is great. Level of information is great. Counselor Al.
Thank you very, very much. For, for starting to get into the kind of things that, that have been a concern for me for quite a while, and that isn't the trades and the training and so on and so forth. And, uh, I am extremely impressed with the way that you're starting to get into that and and I'm looking forward to see where that takes us over the next, uh, uh, you know, six months to a year or more. And, uh, thank you very much for, for really starting to focus. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. And, and that's really a testament to the, to the Home Builders Association and all the, the hard work we're doing. We're, they do. We're a partner, uh, in the process and just figuring out um, where we can help them out, uh, and just kind of help, um, grow their brand and really kind of grow the trades throughout the county.
Other comments or questions, Counselor Carter?
There's one on the, um, your section of business networking events for small business. There's the links to this. Um, the website of ride with GPS dot com, bicycle rides. Who is, who is that group? And, and the reason I'm asking is because I know that the number of their routes are onto private roads. Uh, which is not, you know, they're private. By definition, they're private. They it, you know, we shouldn't be recommending that people, um, you know, utilize them this way.
Uh, through your word, and it's, um, a provincial organization and I'll, I'll follow up to you just to get a little bit more information, um, just because it's, uh, it's just an organization that we just started working with. So it's fundamentally provincial organization that's just trying to promote, um, cycling throughout the province. Um, I'll do a little bit more research on, on the mapping of that. It's, um, not, it's something that Tracy and, um, particularly Tom have focused on. So, um, I can have a look at that and follow up if you just determine what the process is there. Um, and also speaking with Tommy, attended a meeting, I think in early March, um, they're trying to focus really on and, and maybe part of it is removing some of those maps from private property and and just trying to create the provincial network, but I'll confirm that and follow up with council, uh, when I can get accurate information.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just noted because I saw a couple of the roots actually drive across my land. Um, so I, I am interested as, as to, you know, what's going to be coming down the road at me in the next little while.
Literally, I think they sent you an email, but it made it look like spam. I, I, uh,
Uh, any other questions? Could I then have a mover in a second or to receive the report? Counselor Ray Allen, Dayu.
Moved by counselor Ri- Ryle, second by counselor Dayu be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole received the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three report on the first quarter economic development and tourism activity update.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, well, that concludes the business for the most part of the committee of the whole. So could I have a mover in a second or to go into closed? Counselors Fury and Carter.
Moved by counselor Fury, second by counselor Carter be it resolved that Halliburton County Committee of the whole enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization. A position, plan, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or, or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
All in favor? That's carried. For those who don't know, they're out across the street. Welcome back to the open session of council. Um, and, uh, we have nothing left to, but to adjourn. And could I have a mover in a second or to do so? Counselors McKecney and Rowell.
Moved by counselor McKecney, second by council Rowell be it resolved that the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the whole manager.
All in favor? Thanks very much, everyone.